I do have five o'clock call that we need to order. Uh, we could have all board members present, including one of our student representatives. Um, we'll start off with item A, communication items. Janelle, go to you.
Alright, so we'll welcome up our elementary school principal to kick us off, please.
Hi, Mary, welcome. Welcome, everyone. Kudos to our fifth grade students and Mrs. Strand for their successful fifth grade music program. They used ukuleles and boomsticks and recorders and they sang over here at the auditorium. It was fantastic. And also thanks to our families for attending, supporting our kids. Um, last week we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, our staff is amazing at going above and beyond with the activities and experiences for our youth. We had our ECF big truck night at the pack, kindergarten roundup, their musical performances. We offer um, children the opportunity to go to the Yaya Writers Conference at coming up next Friday. Um, several of our kiddos went to Math Masters. Uh, we do field trips. They're working hard on family groups. They also do living classroom experiences with things like owl pellet exploration. Um, fifth graders got to do a mock continental congress today. Uh, third graders do literacy camp. There are podcasts. Just a shout out to staff. All of those things are really fun for kids, but they do take a lot of extra time for our staff. And there are so many more things I didn't list, but um, shout out to our teaching staff. Um, our pop pack volunteers finished packing this morning, so we pack the pop packs before school every other Tuesday. We do them for two weeks. Our average pop packs this year in grades pre K through eight is um, seventy kids. So just a fabulous effort by staff to help out. And then we've got some donations from the community as well, which you've seen throughout the year. Um, our last disbursement week is next Friday. Uh, updates, our color run and playground committee continues to meet. Our next meeting is next Wednesday at three fifteen and our run is a week from Friday, April twentieth at one fifty-five. So if you have some free time and would like to join all of us outside, we'd love to have you. Um, shirts are being printed here in the Innovation Center. If you've followed social media, you see that. So shout out to all the staff and kiddos involved up here and helping us with those. Local businesses that donate more than five hundred dollars get to throw colors. And we're also asking our fifth grade parents to throw colors this year at one of the stations, just as a way to celebrate their kids. Um, accomplishments of graduating from fifth grade. And of course, they'll throw the color green. Um, so our family service project with our family groups that happened a few weeks ago, um, was was Learn to Give. Kiddos worked on painting kindness rocks. They delivered messages to our nursing homes and assisted living. They cleaned the grounds, the bleachers, the dugouts, the bleachers up in the gym, the teachers lounges. They made mayday baskets. They painted rocks. They were busy. And it was very well received, both by community members that ran into them and by faculty and students. So that's a win, something that we hope to do again next year. Um, kindergarten roundup was last Tuesday. We sent out seventy-six invitations. We had forty-six in attendees. I'm not sure why. I have a survey drafted that I need to visit with my kindergarten team with to see what their thoughts are and for some input on that. But let's find out what the results, what the response is from the people that were there and the response from the people that weren't there. Um, we do, just as we have in my past two years here, reach out to families we haven't heard from by the end of May and just find out if they're if they're coming or what we can do to help them. Um, we've had a couple of families this week bring in the packets of registration. The birth certificate theme seems to be the thing that holds up families because they gotta go get that copy for us. So it's a thing that we have to have. Um, the HVAC project is well underway. As far as planning goes, we're meeting pretty frequently. We had a good project meeting last week where we talked about what the process will look like and what I need to share with staff so they feel comfortable and prepared and they have all the supplies and materials that they need to make this successful. Um, lots of field trips and experiences coming up. So take a peek at that some more to see where we're all going. Um, both things in town here in Paintsville to support what we've got going on here and then some trips, of course, away from here. Um, graduation is coming May thirty-first for our fifth grade friends. So we'll talk about the kids that went to Math Masters, school patrol. We'll recognize staff who are retiring or leaving. The fifth graders will sing a song. They'll get some diplomas. And then we'll have the big march, the fifth grade grand march. Any questions or concerns? I can't believe it's already almost the end of the school year. My goodness. Okay, reach out anytime if you have questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, um, for our secondary school and activities director update today, um, I will be giving that to you. Um, Mr. Orline is actually at the True Team uh, competition today with our Tracksters. Uh, so this was um, that is one of our our highlights for today. Um, we are really, really busy trying to get the events in and trying to um, finish the season. Um, so there's uh, it has just been a crazy weather spring, as you are all aware. So um, that's in the process. Uh, playoff and section meets are going to begin the week of May twenty-third. Middle school sports are finally finalizing their season at the end of next week. Um, David has been engaged in conversation and he was approached um, by BBE to see if there was any interest in cooperating in regards to cross-country. Um, our cross-country uh, coach was willing to entertain the conversation. Um, so there's just preliminary high-level conversation about that. Currently, they don't offer cross-country. Um, in our conference, there are other schools that do partner for track and cross-country. So this is a pretty natural comparison, um, or companionship. Um, and it would not affect um, the moving of our class at all. So that those are a couple of things that we're taking into consideration and very high-level preliminary conversations. So obviously, if that moves forward, um, there will be more discussion because that would have to, that would require board action. So more more to come on that. A couple of things at the secondary building, um, Backlorid and Honors Banquet are held on May twenty-second. Graduation is June fifth, again at the baseball stadium. Um, car parade is slated to begin at one fifteen and it'll follow the same route as it did last year. Um, the last date for seniors is?
The twenty-sixth?
Woo-hoo! Alright, just wanted to make sure you were paying attention.
Yeah, I'm super excited for that one.
This is the last day for seniors, is May twenty-sixth. Um, they have graduation practice in the morning and then if everything is in, they are done for the day. Um, we have final band concert, um, uh, six to twelve band concert on May sixteenth, six to eight choir concert on May twenty-third. And last night was the um, the high school um, um, choir concert as well. Um, I did ask for our uh, student council, any updates um, for um, kind of what they've been doing. In the middle school, uh, student council added their update for us. Um, they are having um, their first um, their first dance uh, this fall or this spring. Um, that's going to be coming up. They're continuing to partner with SAD. Um, they're doing work over at the elementary. Um, so there's really just a lot of fun um, community building and service that's taking place through our middle school student council as well. So um, a couple of other things that I'll just add as shout-outs that these are, so this was information from uh, Mr. Orline. I do want to just add um, one other piece. Um, I've had communication with our baseball team and I was hoping to connect with you today about some um, some additional support for moving on um, for our elementary staff. So so really bringing together resources and opportunities and um, many hands make light work. So I'm working on that as well. So that is the activities. If there are there any questions that anybody has for me that I can field? Otherwise, you can certainly um, reach out to Mr. Orline and I suppose as well.
I just had a comment for those who aren't on social media. That it was really refreshing to see that the boys' baseball team kicked into work mode to help get the softball diamond ready for the girls when it had been poured on. And they did get it ready so the game could proceed and the boys, I'm just, it was great to see that cooperation.
Absolutely. At about three o'clock yesterday, the um, ACGC was here. Um, our girls were out. The game was set to start at four. Um, heavy, heavy downpour, three to what, three fifteen-ish standing water. I mean, it just was impossible and um, and the the they did a bunch of the ACGC um, players and coaches. Our baseball boys came out and they just made the field playable. And it was um, by four twenty, uh, they were playing. So it was only about a fifteen, twenty-minute delay. So that was great. So thank you for acknowledging that. Yep, that was, it was cool. Okay. Alright, uh, with that, I will move on to our community education update. So Mr. Dickhausen, come on up and give us the rundown.
Pass.
Sure.
Good evening, uh, passing out the summer brochure there. Uh, just some pack updates. Uh, we continue to get many new members and usage is very strong. Our college, some of our college students already starting to return, which is great. We always like to see them come back. Uh, for example, too, um, even with the nice weather like today, we had six pickleball courts from with community members this morning. So twenty-four, actually about twenty-six players, I think, this morning until like eleven o'clock. So uh, we feel like we're gonna probably keep a lot of those playing inside too all summer. So excited about that. Uh, our new pack custodian, Joseph Lang, is doing a great job. Um, he's really getting into a rhythm there and we're really happy to have him as a part of our team. Um, you see the brochure there, many new programs uh, for this summer. Um, PAWS report, we're at up to a hundred and fifteen now for the school year. And we're at sixty-five for summer as of today. Usually we end up around a hundred. Uh, we average average around sixty-five to seventy kids a day for that. And we're just getting all of our things in a row to to move here down at the end of the hallway for the summer, so. Um, it's funny you talk about the live stream. The spring season's going well. We just had our camera set up for the for the game yesterday and look up in the sky. There's not supposed to be any rain and it just came down. So we quick put everything in and we didn't wreck any equipment. But um, it was great seeing that in person, the the baseball. All of a sudden, it just kinda come and I I couldn't believe that. I texted Dave and I said, you gonna cancel? He's like, no. Be fifteen-minute delay. I was like, wow, they had a lot of hands on deck. So that was great to see. And the girls played really strong and ten run them, so that was good. Um, new Bulldog Bark was sent out today highlighting all the, some of the great happenings. So any questions for me?
Oh, this summer then with PAWS being over here, down in the pack, how is that gonna affect community usage?
Yeah, so they're based down here. Uh, we'll be outside. We'll actually be bussing to the elementary for the to the playground. We won't be like basing out of the pack.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be using it, but it'd be no different um, than like FIAID how, you know, we always will have the community courts and things too, so. Yeah, now on really, really hot days and muggy, they may be in the lobby a little bit more on some of those days or even down the hallway by the fitness center, doing some stations. Our rooms here though will be air-conditioned too. We're bringing our conditioners over.
Okay.
So. Anything else? Thank you.
You.
Alright, uh, technology update.
Hello, everybody. Um, we're all done with MSK testing. Yay. Each day went well. Um, we had a tack launched on us the second day, but what was nice is the mitigation took care of it, so testing finished. Um, later that day though, we still had smaller attacks coming in that our fire was taking care of. And I had a configuration issue that caused some allergies for us later that day, so I just fixed that and tweaked it a little bit so it'll work a little better moving forward. Um, it's still nice to kinda have those attacks in every mirror because they were really a bear in the fall. Um, staff docking stations are still being deployed. I have about, after counting today, twenty-two left out of sixty. I'm really trying to get these done before the school year is done. Um, especially with the construction project coming up at the elementary school. Um, feel like I'm in the movie uh, Groundhog Day. Same thing over and over and then. But it's it's really nice to to get those setups all done for staff. Um, when I install their docking station, I take out their old desktop tower. And I've actually been able to repurpose and operate a lot of those for the computer lab here off the Innovation Center. Um, we still need some desktops for the kids to use Photoshop Illustrator and some drafting programs for some of our classes. Do that and get a few more years out of that lab with not having to spend any extra money on it. Um, the new Chromebooks for the incoming sixth and ninth graders um, were ordered and they've arrived already. We had to order early to make sure we could get the hundred and sixty of three thousand that were left in the country. Um, it's really a pain in the butt because you have to act fast on these because they have no, no estimation of when more will be created or made or anything for us. So we got them here. We'll get them all unboxed and um, Colin Wolf will be helping me this summer getting ready for the kids. Um, as Mary kinda touched base on, we had a meeting last week with SiteLogic. Um, I was involved with that just to kinda make sure there's none of my stuff that'd be getting away and getting in the way of them. Um, there were some classroom speakers that we're gonna have to take down. And Gary Schmidt has been really a godsend of all that he's done so far with this project. And he's been doing a lot to help everyone else, so big shout out to him. Um, yeah, we'll be taking the docking stations, all monitors and phones on June first and making sure everything's covered up for the project so nothing gets wrecked a little bit, so. Any questions?
These cyber cyber attacks that we've been experiencing, are they directed directly at the school or are they citywide?
So yeah, just just to us, um, when we go out to the internet from our network here, we have one IP address. That is our public facing IP address. So sadly, you can buy these attacks on the web and target a certain IP address. I believe there have been, hopefully, I don't think, but some students that may have bought this and launched it against us. Um, I could be wrong. These things happens to other organizations too, but yeah, it's just launched to us. And there's a bunch of, it's called a distributed denial service. And what that means is there's a bunch of skewed cameras or AV monitors or stuff that have been compromised. And they can be used by hackers to just put a lot of nonsense traffic at us and interrupt our internet services. Nothing that's stolen from our network or anything. It just, it's really just a nuisance. Just nuisance.
Is there any way to track back?
No, there, with it being distributed, there's probably hundreds of thousands of these sending data to us. So like, we've seen stuff come in from India, from Austria, from Russia, from China, just all over the world, so.
So that that's one of the reasons why um, we have protected our our wifi. Um, so if there's kind of a a question as to why are we password protected and why do we have, um, because that's that's a a step.
Right, and that's, it's a, it's a big thing for me to have that um, track record of every device that uses their internet, just in case there's something that goes wrong. So.
So a little bit off that question. So we have the tax coming in. My assumption is the taxes are probably coming in most all the time.
Yep.
And but is there an uptick for the MCAs?
It was, it was, it's, it was, it was kinda ironic because we haven't been, we haven't had a tack in over three months and we get one on one of the MCA testing days. That's what really kinda sparks my, who's doing this type of thing. Um, but that's why it's nice to have that mitigation from RV to make sure we can stay up and running when these things happen.
Maybe it's somebody that doesn't like MCAs.
I know, I know. That's a big list. Anything else? Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, so Buildings and Grounds update, I do wanna add just a couple of things. Um, so I had a a conversation with a um, a gentleman who has been doing some work uh, also with BBE. Um, and and I met with him to really um, I guess, begin kind of an analysis now that we've changed our structure a little bit for our lead positions. Um, do some analysis of our staffing to see, um, you know, if if we had kind of looked at as a, as a, for instance, we have the the pack position that is currently at a four-hour position. If that was an eight-hour position, what would that mean for our um, our FTE of our Buildings and Grounds Director? So that we have some solid basis to go on. Um, you know, as we talked about, um, when we terminated the contract for the shared services, um, that position really did um, entail probably a lot more than um, than was feasible uh, without some of just our established processes in place. And so, um, you know, we, I really valued uh, Steve's feedback and input and decision and and um, kind of recommendation. And then we'll pair that with the recommendation of um, the outside set of eyes looking at our district and giving us a recommendation. Um, I I do wanna also add a shout out to both Gary and Brad. Um, both of them have really stepped up in Steve's absence. Um, Gary has really taken the lead with um, with Mary at the uh, elementary to be part of those meetings. Have kind of the just field questions, understand and know the big picture of what's happening. And so that's really been critical. Um, and and here at the secondary building, um, you know, Brad has brought a number of things to me just to make sure. So I'm I'm very comfortable that that they they are, um, they're moving forward and they're they're keeping things moving and and keeping me in the loop when necessary. So I just wanted to give you an update on the Buildings and Grounds.
Well, one thing that happened is it is we have all these conversations about the population of the school. The buildings haven't changed. The maintenance doesn't change. So we could have fifty less kids, fifty more kids. You're probably not gonna have much different there. And maybe in analysis, if a shared position was too much, maybe we were looking to um, economize that position to make it more economical. And then maybe it wasn't possible because we we don't have any changes here.
Right.
The buildings are exactly the same as they were. No matter what the student population is, that maintenance is still there and nobody likes it dirty.
Right.
So.
Anything else on the updates before I move on?
Thank you. Move on. Voter participation.
Alright, so uh, when I presented the original voter information, um, and I I apologize. Um, I had a couple of questions about the titling and I I could have been more clear in the way I titled this information. So this first, the first chart really was, again, um, just the um, this is what I presented to you last time. So it's the comparison of our our staff that were registered voters, elementary parents and secondary parents. So then I just took that same information and I looked at it um, to look at the bond issue that was presented in twenty nineteen. So now the one caveat that I just wanna add and that that just to be be clear, I did not go back and take a look at which parents would have migrated from the elementary to the secondary. So I kept all the voter data the same. If they were an elementary parent, we would have seen if they voted in twenty nineteen, they would have had the same, you know, they would have been reflective. So uh, what you'll see is um, from a staff, we were up to seventy-eight point, I need to make that a little bit bigger for my eyes. Has nothing to do with my age, nothing. Alright. Um, so our staff participation was seventy-eight point four, point five percent. Elementary parents was a fifty-two percent and our secondary parents was a fifty-three percent. Um, I was a little surprised by that. I thought that maybe would have been a little bit higher, to be honest with you, when I, when we looked at our um, our participation rate of thirty-five percent and thirty-four percent respectively for um, twenty twenty-one. But um, so I did wanna share that back to you so that you had that point of reference as well. I do think um, having, finding the way is getting our communication out to our families um, so that they are, they are aware, understanding the importance and um, all that information is gonna be really critical as we move forward.
So Janelle, when we're looking at this, if we have parents that have elementary students and secondary students, are they in both?
No, I did. So I did, they, yes, they're elementary. They would be representative if they have an elementary student. They were on an elementary list. If they were on a secondary, if they have a secondary student, they're on a secondary list. I did not cross-reference and say it, both parents, um, but they are, they're, they're still counted if they're an elementary parent. They were an elementary parent voter.
Okay. So I was just wondering if we had them or parents had them in both schools, if they showed up on here twice or?
Well, they're only gonna show up once in each category. You know, they're not gonna show up twice in the elementary category if with two kids.
No, no.
No, 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 no. What I meant is, yeah, did they show up in each category? Or did they automatically go into one category so it looks like the elementary had more?
Nope, so they're differentiated.
When I look at this one, um, in twenty nineteen, we were voting for um, something tangible. Um, this last time, it covering expenses is an intangible. Little bit like selling insurance as compared to going out and buying a a new personal watercraft.
Right.
There's two excitement levels. There's no excitement for the first one. There's excitement for the second one. We have a little bit of that.
Agreed.
Um, we also have a lot of things that have changed. So I like the analysis of all this. I just know we have a big job because but just today, I started looking at some of where inflation rates and things with that. Well, we're in a small community. People's costs are going up everywhere, okay? We're wanting to vote for something intangible. It's not like they're gonna go there and have a lot of fun in five hundred and thirty-one dollars per student.
Right.
Um, so we have a big road ahead of us.
Yes.
Um, but I think we need to be very realistic that um, for me, I I write off some of the failure of that vote for stuff that's out of our control. Some of the inflation items are out of our control. A lot of things that, but they affected our whole voting population.
Right.
So.
With the potential affecting it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I'm I'm curious to see, um, I've not started analyzing any information and I've not looked into the preliminary um, vote. I will just add um, two things. Um, we do still have, because I'm hoping if people are watching, we do still have codes. So if anybody needs an additional code for families, they can certainly email um, Miranda or call her and she can either give it to them or email. Um, and the press did drop off a few um, paper surveys as well. And so they are stored at the district office so people can and provide, make sure they have an opportunity to provide that information. Um, because I do think that it is going to be important for us to look at where that threshold is um, and understand the kind of what we're what we're facing as we look forward. Alright, um, next item that I have is just more of an informational item. So um, our, the majority of our banking services are um, are currently um, held at Bank of the West. And Bank of the West was recently bought out by BMO Harris, which is a larger um, international, or national um, bank. Um, I I, it has not been quite as convenient. Their hours are pretty limited. Um, we have um, fees for online banking services. Um, so we, at throughout the district office, we talked about it might be time for us to open up for a request for banking services. Now, they can provide a a bid back to us and a a service back and and if they can answer our questions. Um, so what you, what has been attached for you to review is just the uh, the request for proposals. Um, there's a couple of one piece that I do wanna um, just maybe add a little reassurance to. Um, as we look at some of these items, all of these things are, so the the questions are going to be um, meeting our current banking needs. So it's not gonna be like it would be anything, um, you know, that's in excess or we're really looking to change our services per se. Um, but this really is, these are all of the current factors that we have in place as we look at the banking services. Um, the other thing that I will point out for you um, that we do have is um, and because I do know that we have a credit union in town, we did have um, some analysis and I checked with MSBA. Um, also to make sure that there are not any issues if the credit union would submit a proposal. They would have um, the um, if they would be the preferred, there would not be any liability or any issues from an insurance perspective because of an FDIC versus the the credit union assurance. So just wanted to add that in there. So that's why you'll see that there's the FDIC or um, NCUA insured, assured language in there. Um, so this would also, the other piece that that just, so that timing perspective, um, as you all are aware, anytime that we make any banking service changes, um, it is extensive. There's a lot of information that comes to the board for signatures. Um, my recommendation would not be to change this until we make the formal change in July where you set the bank. Um, and so it would be to run through this um, through this fiscal year. And then actually, it would give us the month of July to make the transition. So you'll notice that the request for proposal date on here is um, as of August first. Now, if the board feels strongly that that should take place July first, then we'll, you know, we can look at that differently. But um, that was our time, when we got through the timeframe of making a motion to set our services, you know, that would naturally take place in July.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, it does.
Okay. Alright, um, so the next item on the agenda is um, so this is a follow-up to um, I had, I had uh, committed to you that I would be able, that I would share out some information um, about the local operating um, levy information. So the, so this document in front of you has, and I'm gonna, whoops. Go away. There we go. Um, so this is really to help kind of walk through why there's those changes. And 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 it really came from um, it really came from the what's levy uh, revenue versus aid revenue. And where it comes from, why it's different, why one's big, why one's small. So I want to just kind of give a, some really, um, this is, I'm going to be honest with you, this is super weedy, right? This is a lot of like really deep detail, but it's, I, my hope here is that you helped kind of see all the variations and influences to our levy, our, our levy, um, just really the levy process, okay? So the local optional revenue, and I've heard this question come up a number of times in reference to the referendum. Because our voter approved, um, above the LOR is thirty nine twenty five. So our, the local optional revenue that was approved by the board is seven hundred and twenty four dollars. So the history behind that is if you, um, back in, in twenty twelve, if districts had voter-approved referendums, the legislate, the legislature gave school boards authority to make some of that local optional revenue, which would make it a, a permanent revenue, okay? For school districts that did not have any voter-approved levies, this was new money for them. For us, this was just cost neutral, there was no, I mean, our, we had a voter-approved levy, so it was just shifting from one pot to another pot. Where it gets confusing to people is because when you go back and look at in twenty twelve, when our referendum was approved, because it's expiring now in twenty twenty two, so ten years. When you look at the dollar amount that was approved, it doesn't match thirty nine twenty five. But that's because of the legislative shifts that have taken place over the course of years, okay? So, um, so Painesville's expiring operating referendum that went out to vote in twenty twelve. Seven hundred and twenty four of that offsets through LOR and the thirty nine twenty five is what's remaining as voter-approved. That's significantly below our neighboring communities. And that's where you, we've shown that number on the graph in the past, okay? So the other piece that really comes into play, and this is where, when Bruce, when you were asking some questions about like, well, why are some of these numbers so varied and why are they so different? Some of this has to do with the tiers of funding that go into the local optional revenue, okay? The tier allowances are also set, set via statute. Our, the Minnesota legislature says, okay, so the first three hundred dollars is a tier one allowance and the, the second four hundred and twenty four is the second tier allowance, okay? So what you're looking at on your document or on this screen is our current breakdown, okay? Now, why this matters and why this is super important is because this really does help our taxpayers. Okay, and here's why, the reason this impacts our taxpayers is because of equalization. What that means is that when you, and I'm going to come back up to the, to the previous screen, where you see the portion of the first tier aid, aid means money from the state, okay? Now, I get it, all of our state dollars are all taxpayer dollars anyways, but it's not, when we look at our first tier levy dollars, those are distributed directly on the Painesville taxpayers, okay? When you look at that first tier aid, that hundred and ten thousand off, comes off of the first, so the hundred and eighty two of it is voter levy, a hundred and ten of it is state aid, okay? So when you, when you think back to the discussion that we were having on that spreadsheet of like, why these vary and why they fluctuate, this is why they vary and why they fluctuate, because with the legislature, these dollar amounts are changed. The amount that you can use to determine, are we in, um, are we going to get more aid off of our levy or less aid? That dollar amount shifts in the legislature. So as a, for instance, when we come into, you'll see our referendum market value, if you look at our, the, this is the referendum market value payable nineteen, twenty, twenty one and twenty two, you'll see that that dollar amount is increasing, okay? And then you'll see that our resident pupil units is decreasing. So what that means is that, in, in short, this makes us more eligible for aid to offset the, the, the impact to our taxpayers, okay? The reason I think this is so important is because I've also heard people ask like, okay, so wait a minute, my, my property value is going up. I pay more money for my house, my house taxes right now, the school district must be getting more money. That's not true, we still get the set dollar amount that is approved via the levy that the board sets and is authorized by the voters, right? That, that dollar amount does not change. What changes is the way that it's distributed across the properties, okay? So the things that I think are really important for our community and for you as a board to remember are the things that do impact our levies and our aid over time. The legislative changes are really important and that is where, so in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there was a shift from four twenty four to seven twenty four. So those numbers changed, the amount that was considered, um, that was considered the local optional revenue. And then with that change, we brought in the tiered system. So now we have some aid that goes with that levy, which is good, again, anytime we have aid, that's good for our voters. Cause then it's less burden on the taxpayer, okay? So the other piece to be really aware of here, that, um, our student enrollment certainly does impact our levy dollars. As you'll see, in nineteen twenty, Painesville had a thousand six resident pupil units. Okay, now this is the, this is one of those spots where it's not your ADMs, so it's, it's different. This is where, and people in education will often count, does it really even matter if, if we count resident district? And this is where it matters to count your resident district pupils, okay? So you'll see in nineteen twenty, Painesville had a thousand six resident pupil units. Twenty twenty one, Painesville had a thousand fourteen. And in twenty one twenty two, that pupil unit went down to nine eighty six. So then if you kind of just go back right up to this chart and you look at the, the pupil units, so this is our, our estimate for twenty two twenty three, so now we're estimating nine seventy nine. Okay, again, when you change that pupil unit, it's going to change all the rest of those calculations because they all fit together.
Can you explain the pupil, pupil unit a little bit? So is that our, the students of our population that are in school and those that are not of that age?
This is the, the residents, so if they're counted as a, as a student, as a pupil student. So like our preschool kids would not, because if they're not required to be in school. So this would be, and, and I'll, I can confirm if this is not right, but this is going to be our resident, um, the pupil, if they're considered a school-aged pupil, they're going to count as a number, so it's not going to be.
Whether they're in our system or not.
Whether, so if they are a, so we want.
If they're homeschooled.
But if they're, if they open enroll, they don't count. So if this is the resident, they live, they are residents of the Painesville area school district.
But if they're homeschooled, they would count.
They count.
Okay, so that's why the difference between what we actually have for students and what are available students in the area, because those are all higher numbers than we've been looking at for a while.
Yep, and, but I'm going to, I'm going to confirm the, um, the homeschool, um, whether or not they are, they're counted in this. So one of the things, so I want, I walked through this with Ellers today. And when I was visiting with Ellers, one of the things that they want to remind school, they, they just said, you know, we often talk about bringing in more students and we want to increase our enrollment. When we increase our enrollment, we then naturally have more cost. Therefore, there's more responsibility that's put on our taxpayers via the resident pupil unit. So they wanted to, they said, just remember that as you're looking at your students, you, we all want to add more students, which is wonderful. But then we have increased costs and there's more cost that goes back to our taxpayers. And it's, it's, it's all cyclical, right? And I think the biggest piece that I really wanted to point out here to you, to you Bruce, as you're looking at this is, when we have these fluctuations, regardless of whether they count, don't count, I mean, the same data is being used every year in here. And so I will confirm whether homeschool is included, but because it's the same data point across the, the, the course of those years, you're going to see that is telling our story of our fluctuation in our student body. Of our, of our student enrollment, this, this is the consistent information.
But that's where, that's where my question is, um, enrollment versus resident.
But that's not been a huge.
Cause those numbers are not what we, what we're seeing, we're not seeing these numbers on our audit report, so.
Yep, this is off, this is right off of our levy, levy report. This is right off of the, the, the levy report that we go over in December. This information is right off of there.
So, but it's defined differently.
Correct, so.
So what's the, I guess I'd just be curious, what the definition of a resident?
That can be another, I'll do another, I'll do another one on that.
You know what it is and what we actually have enrolled. I, I have a feeling it's going to, it's going to include all the people that are in this district that are not open enrolled, that are eligible to be in our school, maybe not necessarily who's here. And don't we get paid on who's here more than who are eligible?
So there's two different calculations for your, your general ed revenue is pay, is based on a different calculation than this. This is, there's two, um, there are two levies that are calculated on this formula. I will do, there's, there are about three or four different definitions of pupil that I'll look into and I'll put that into a slide for you guys.
I'd just be kind of curious to see what that is because, um, from the numbers we have talked about.
Yeah.
I just know, when I look back at my time on the school board, we had close to a thousand twenty students when I got on the school board. And last time I, um, was elected, people asked me how well I did and I said, well, if you look at the number of students in the school, I didn't do very well.
Right.
Because our number of our students had fallen at what seems to be
Yep.
almost a consistent level, which we turned around just before COVID, but I'd be curious to see what that is.
And you'll see that, you'll see that a thousand six up to a thousand fourteen, so there is, but, and, and I hear what you're saying, Bruce, that there are, there are multiple ways to count students regardless, I believe, and I'll look at this to make sure, but the trends are about the same, because we have not had a huge increase in open enrollment in or open enrollment out. Those have been pretty stable as a district over the course of years. There was, we do know that we lost some students to homeschool and, um, online schools during COVID. Um, and we've had some returns, but not to that, to that high level and we know that. So I will look at, at the definitions and get those for you so we can.
I know it comes out in averages, but if you look at when we had our new facility just getting going, everybody was so excited and all that, COVID didn't show up in the middle of the summer. After our, our numbers had set on who were in the school, it showed up in the middle of the winter. So the growth that we had in the fall totally dissipated by we got the fixture. So now we look at the averages like nothing even happened during those years.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of stuff we were monitoring as we went. I'd just be curious on that one, because the other part of this is the, one of these formulas and PMA talks about it. Um, where when we get more kids, based upon the valuation in the district, we can look like a, a, a district that's a little better off reducing state aid. And so I know that there's enough formulas out there that the state kind of takes your hand and supposedly takes your hand and puts it behind your back and then expects you to try and.
So, so I'm going to add, I'm going to show you a resource that's in here that we're going to get to in just a minute. So, and, and that, and people as they're watching, they can, they can go in and look at it, this same resource. It's the, so what this is, is this is the, this is the, um, the School Finance Guide for Legislators. So this is intended to be simplified, it's not very simplified, I mean, I'm, I'll be honest with you. This is a hundred and forty four pages of formulas, terms, where it's coming from. But that's where, your, your write-throughs, there's a lot of ways that you can identify, identify the student and then how that fits into the prescriptive formula. For this purpose today, the reason I showed this to you is so that when we're looking at how our levies and aids vary, you have to take into account student enrollment, okay? However it's counted, whether we count it as, as in our average daily membership, whether we count it in our weighted, our WADMs, our weighted average, our WADMs, I'm not going to use the term because I won't. Our WADMs, our ADMs or our resident pupil units, however we count them, if those change, that also changes the funding mechanism that goes with it, right? Um, and the other piece that just to again remind people and to remind, as you guys are, are getting questions, when our property values increase, the school district's revenue does not increase correspondently, okay? We still just get the dollar amount that's approved via the levy. It's just, it's distributed differently across the pieces of the pie.
So that's another one of those negative things, everybody got their, um, taxes for twenty two, twenty three. And all of a sudden they look at the increase of their valuation, makes them nervous, right? It just doesn't include us, that's the, the cities, townships, county. We are excluded from that, but the perception I don't think is that.
So let's, let's look at this one, so let's take a, a look at the steps to calculating property tax levies. So if you look at the first step, the county assessor determines the market value of each parcel of property in the county. That's totally outside of our control, right? We have nothing to do with that. The legislature sets the formula for tax capacity, so, um, and this is, I'm, I'm not going to get into this today because we'll, as we move forward in determining whether or not, um, we, how we have communication around the tax impact. But this is where our, the legislature sets formula for, for spreading your tax capacity across your, um, across your local school district. And that is where you have different formulas and they include very different factors. Our county auditor calculates the tax capacity for each parcel as well as the total tax capacity for the school district, okay? Again, outside of our sphere of control. The legislature sets the formula which determines school district levy limits. This sets minute maximum amount, school districts are also able, able to levy. So when you think about, as we look at number six, that's referenced up ahead, step five is.
But that is not going to change, that, that specific item there is changing a limit, not changing anybody's taxes.
Nope, no, we're going to get there, yep, nope, I don't.
The rest of it is, is working under taxes, that one.
This is, right, the point here Bruce is the school board has one, one role in this and school boards adopt a proposed levy in September of each year. So that's the only area that the school board has any authority to determine, okay? And historically, school boards, if you, if you visit with Ellers and you talk to, um, they're going to, to recommend in, in September that you authorize the maximum levy authority and then you revise that if necessary in December, okay? So that when we have our truth in taxation meeting in December, um, that's where, if, if the board would decide, you know what? We want to do something different and, and under levy in one area or a levy to the maximum capacity, that's the discussion that takes place in, in December. But that's, so there's, there's a whole bunch of other steps that take place long before the school district has any ability to make any determination on whether you're going to maximize your levy certification, okay? So there's a lot of formulas that are outside of our control. There's a lot of, of determinations that have nothing to do with the school board. And I, I agree that schools often get targeted for your reason our taxes are high and there's a lot of, of factors that are, are not, that are not part of that, okay? So again, the information that, so this, this link here is the guide for legislators. So that's the document that I, that I'm showing you right here, this is updated annually. So you'll see, um, and you can, if you want to look at, and I'll just show you right in here, it's got, um, the educational acronyms. So your ADM is your average daily membership, oh, look at. Oh, look at that, I can tell you what WOTM is without, so I can not have to come back to that one. Okay, we're gonna, WOTM, weighted average daily membership. See, I would have been pretty darn close. Okay, so this document, if you, and and believe me. Most people are not gonna look at this. Most boards don't have a lot of interest in this. Again, the reason I brought this to you was because there was a question about why did that, why did our our revenues change? And where did that come from? And it was because of the changes in legislature and the changes in our our um student enrollment and the calculations of our levy versus aid. Thanks. So lots, that was like fire hose type stuff coming at you. Um, but please, if there are other questions, I would love to schedule a time, we can walk through it. Um, I, as I mentioned, I had a conversation with Ellers today. They would be happy to meet with if we have a a board committee that wants to, that we wanna discuss having more finite conversations about this, we certainly can. Um, they would be willing to come to board meetings too. I mean, they're, they've offered that and I know we've taken them up on that in the past, so. Um, there's just, those are a couple of resources to us, so please, if you have other questions, don't hesitate to reach out. And I am happy to pull it together. If you have a question, the likelihood is somebody else does too. So then I can, I can like, I'll put together all the different types of how we calculate kids. And and then we can present that out because I think that's important, okay?
It works if attachments like this are here. So we can look at it earlier.
Yep. Yeah, and and this one, I I did need to have a conversation with Ellers to make sure that the information.
It brings up a lot more questions here.
Yep.
That we could have detail on, but um, it should be here so we can, we can decipher this a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And the public gets a chance to look at it too, I think they get to see how it works.
Yep. Yep. Any other questions? Uh, the next item is pretty easy. Um, you will see sitting in front of you um, the plaque that was created by our students and staff to uh commemorate the addition of the um PAC and CTE space. Um, so you can take a look at that and um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and show that to all of you. Um, that that was, that has been created by our our students and our staff.
Where would that hang?
Um, I'm not quite sure, where did Matt, is Matt, I, we haven't really talked about that yet.
That looks really great.
Yeah, so.
Probably Matt's office.
Remember when you come in, you can find a spot.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it would be.
Looks great.
Nice and, nice and visible. Um, the, the backing is obviously um, the raw cut homesod lumber. Um, if anybody was driving by the school today, uh, the person who cut all that lumber last year was here again today. Um, and was cutting up a bunch more, I don't know if anybody had been out in the back and um. For those of you that were at the baseball, um, you probably saw the big log um, at the picnic or the cookout on Friday. All those big logs, those are all the ones that were cut up today and they create wood like that, which is just amazing, so. Um, that's pretty exciting, so presentation of of the plaque. Okay. Um, so the next item that I have today is um, just a um, kind of a, I've, I've had a lot of people call asking about running for the school board. Um, and I thought that it was important to um, just get information out about the school board. How to become a school board candidate. Um, we can talk through some timelines and and I just wanted to share this out. Um, I don't, I I will go through this. Um, this is also posted. Um, but this was put together by the Minnesota School Boards Association. So just as a reminder, um, MSBA is the, the professional organization that really does support school boards. Um, they have been around since nineteen twenty. Um, they, they really do keep a pulse on legislative actions. They keep a pulse on the policy requirements. Um, they have legal counsel that is um, giving guidance to school districts about policy. Um, they assist in superintendent searches, they assist in board development. Um, and they really are um, the, the primary source for professional development and growth of school boards. Um, so that's their background and where that comes from as you look at this today. So from a, just a, a, a technical perspective, what technically is a school board? It is the body of elected officials, individuals that were represent the communities they serve. The power and authority is granted by the state of Minnesota. The purpose is to ensure effective, efficient, and equitable delivery of high-quality education to all the school district students through adoption of policy. So that's why when you look back up at one of the responsibilities and the roles, that's why MSBA has such a strong presence in legislation and policy, okay? So they really help to guide the work. Um, one of the important tasks is to hire, direct, and evaluate the superintendent. Again, you'll see, um, one of the things that they do is they offer support for superintendent searches as well. Okay? So somebody might ask, should I run for school board? Okay, so these are the questions that MSBA has posed. Why do you want to run? Are you concerned about more than a single issue? Are you concerned about the greater good? Are you interested in solving problems? Do you wanna be a member of a team? If your answer to those is no, then why are you running, right? Um, how do you become a candidate? So school boards, um, they're, they can be, they're primarily, primarily elected in November, um, in our general election. If there is a primary, now we do not, we're not running a primary, so it is a moot point for us um, to have a May election. But so um, school board members are elected in November and during the general election, okay? So to file for candidacy, this is where if we had um, a primary, uh, we could have a May filing, we don't. And so for us, it's gonna be the late June, late July filing for school districts. So I did pull off the information for us, so the last day, so the last day for school boards to publish the notice of filing is July nineteenth. So at our July board meeting, we'll start, we'll start the action to get information rolling so that we can open, have people file and run for candidacy, okay? The open period for filing is um, August second to August sixteenth. So those will be the dates. Um, the candidate needs to file an affidavit of candidacy, uh, which does need to be notarized as a point of reference. We do have a notary in our district office. Many candidates will bring the form in, have it notarized there and pay their two dollars. So we, um, that's the process to file for candidacy. Eligibility, it's just like running for president, there's an eligibility process. So you have to be twenty-one, must be an eligible voter. You have to live in the, be a resident for the school, in the school district for thirty days prior to the election. Um, if you are a convicted felon, your civil rights would need to have been restored. Um, and you must not earn more than eight thousand dollars per fiscal year as a district employee, okay? So um, there's oftentimes question about how much school board members can make and it's always less than that eight thousand dollars, okay? Financial reporting, um, sometimes there are, there are pretty substantial campaigns that um, that come into place. And if a campaign has received or spent over seven hundred and fifty dollars, it triggers a requirement to file a campaign finance report. Okay? Um, regardless, all candidates, no matter much how much money, has to file a campaign financial report seven days after the election. So why would you wanna be on the school board, what's the purpose? You know, what are the powers of the school board? So again, these are all taken from Minnesota statute. And you'll see that the statutes are all referenced, so people can look at those if they like statutory reading. Um, I know it's pretty exciting, but I, I'm not gonna lie, I do go back to statute actually kind of a lot because there's a lot of information in statute, but. Um, so it's the case man, case management and control of school district affairs, okay? So you're charged with the care, management, and control of the affairs of the school district. It's six elected, um, a minimum of six um, elected officials. We obviously have seven because our voters have approved seven. Um, you all run on, and and it's set up above, but um, you're on three or four member voter cycles, so um, that, and that varies, that's consistent, I guess, is that there's always. You never have like a four and, four and two or a four, five and one. Um, the powers, the school board must have the general charge of the business of the district, the schoolhouse, and the interests and of the schools thereof. So as you look at those things, um, there are some very specific areas that you'll, you'll see. And they are often guided by the policies that the school board approves. Um, so boards employ a superintendent. The, they, the board must superimpose and manage the school of the district, adopt rules for the organization, government instruction. Keep registers and prescribe textbooks and course of study. So if you look at all the policy that we have, the policy that that are reviewed. Those are all the policies that dictate and guide this work, okay? Uh, because we are, uh, we have, maintain a secondary school, we must employ a superintendent. So the superintendent is an ex officio non-voting member of the board. So the general powers, so you'll notice the school board issues bonds with voter approval. We did that this fall, we issued bonds. Levies, taxes, we just had a lot of discussion about that. Um, hires and discharges employees, so you'll see every employment action always comes to the school board for either um, a, a, a hire or a dismissal. Contracts for services, um, we're gonna talk a little bit more about negotiating contracts. Purchase facilities, no, there's no, the school in and of itself has no authority to purchase anything outside of the board, like a property. Okay? Um, I thought this one's funny, it removes unauthorized vehicles. It, it just seemed kind of weird because it was, and it's, and it spells it out in statute, removes unauthorized vehicles, but. Operates a wind energy conversion system, okay? Um, but and we see this one often, authorizes use of credit cards. Um, so again, many of those banking things that you approve and you, the process wise are because of of these policies and these rules. So fun, fundamental roles, um, they're most efficient when they're focused on the big picture, making policy because all of the other areas that come through that um, are devised from policy. Setting goals, the district has done a lot of work on strategic planning. Um, and the goals, setting the goals really helps to understand then, when you look at the last bullet point. Uh, hire, direct, and evaluate the performance of a superintendent. So when you have solid policy, goals that are established, um, then it's easier to understand is the superintendent doing what we hired them to do? Um, some more work of the school board, developing a vision for the school district, setting goals and monitoring progress. This establishing school district policy, hiring, directing, and evaluating a superintendent. So if you run for the school board, what are the going to be the expectations? You know, um, what is the work attending training and governance and education issues? Um, MSBA has four different phase trainings. Um, they are really, really important and they are very foundational. And I think they really help individuals understand and know the role of a school board. Um, and understand the individual's role in a school board as well. Align resources with goals, we've talked a little bit about um, how we are making sure that, that as we're facing budget reductions and we're having conversation about, about budget, are we still in alignment with the strategic plan? Um, so that's one of those things that, that we continue to talk through and I think um, you'll, that's a good um, inkling as to why. Uh, collaborating with community partners, um, our, I, I think our um, our relationships with our with our CTE area, um, our relationship with um, the chamber, we have a lot of community partners. Uh, we work a lot with our um, our um, social services, with the, the colony. There's just, there's a lot of collaboration that takes place throughout the school. Ensuring facilities are safe and adequate, um, you'll, uh, communication with stakeholders, monitoring student achievement. You know, we have, that's why we have a world's best workforce presentation that takes place. Um, and we, we talk about student achievement. Approving collective bargaining way contracts. Again, um, if we, when we go through collective bargaining, um, nothing in, in that takes effect until the board officially signs that document and and ratifies and and approves that contract. Um, advocating student needs to lawmakers. So if I could go back to um, the, if I could go back to this local optional revenue discussion. Um, when there is so much that is outside of a school, but a school board members' control when it comes to funding and finance. That's why it's so important to have conversations with lawmakers about the decisions that you make at the legislature, they impact us at the local level. And so that's one of the things, MSBA has done a nice job also. Um, really kind of connecting and supporting board members that, that really are comfortable um, with the legislative advocacy, so that's one of the other roles of the board. What qualities make a good school board member? Um, so outstanding school board members, they're motivated by the best interest of all students. Passionate about public education, able to make difficult decisions, strong communicators who are willing to listen. Um, believe in the democratic process, willing to spend time and energy on school board business. I think this is something that I, I want people to really understand when they run for the school board. Is that um, it does take time and it does take energy and effort. Um, and it takes a commitment to understanding um, the, the committees. Understanding what's presented at the committees, being present and being part of those um, activities. Um, and then to the commitment to the governance training, um, phase one as an example is requirement. You know, that's something that, that all school board members have to go through. Um, and it talks a lot about the funding, it talks a lot about um, the process. It talks a lot about the role of a school board member and what is your role in, as a member of this team. Um, you, the ultimate, um, school board members are the ultimate elected volunteers. Again, most school board members don't run for the money, it is not a money-making venture. Um, they are here to primarily because they're concerned about the welfare of all children. Um, are part of a school board team that is an oversight of school district decisions. They um, attend required trainings and are held to high ethical standards. Um, some law pieces that have to be taken into account. Um, school board meetings are subject to open meeting law, so obviously every time we have a formal meeting in this nature. It is a, a open meeting, um, we have to have it published. Um, there are, um, we must do the business um, in the public with, there are a few exceptions of statutory um, that are, are defined in statute. Um, the public has a right to observe meeting and, and this is interesting, public participation is only determined by board policy. Um, I, when I was reading this, I, you know, there's been a lot of discussion um, recently with um, school boards that have um, public comment in really, and we've, on the news, you've seen a lot of um, school boards that have had just really contentious um, public statements and um, and that, and and there's, there's members of, of communities who felt like this is, you have to allow me. And and actually, when you look at the law, it's, it's not required, so I thought it was interesting, but. Um, we, obviously, we do, but. Um, special meetings must officially be posted, um, and then a quorum of a school board must be present. I'll define that because I, when I, there's some people that don't know, a quorum is just a, a majority vote. So on a seven-member board, we would have to have at least four members present, okay? Data privacy, uh, school board members need to maintain the, the privacy or confidentiality of certain types of data. And some of the laws provide significant consequence for wrongdoing, wrongful disclosure. Um, I think there's people that maybe don't understand, you know, as a public, um, as a school board member that um, all that information, there's, you're still bound by those, by those laws. Um, public records, um, I think this is interesting and it's important for people that may have an interest in running for school board, knowing that um, data in all forms, um, that's stored, whether it's paper or electronic. Um, so it's, it's, it's a public record. Um, so when email communication, um, texting between uh, board members, texting between with a constituent, those are all recoverable. Um, that's why school board members are always assigned a uh, school district email. And the expectation is that those, um, that communications take place through the school district email. Um, and school board members are, are expected to follow all district policy. Um, there is a school, a school board member code of ethics, um, being prepared for and attending board meetings. Um, there is a school, a school board member code of ethics, um, being prepared for and attending board meetings, focusing on student achievement, focus on the greater good, represent all stakeholders, support the decisions of the school board, follow school board code of ethics policy. And just remember, um, the school board members have power only when sitting together at the board table. Um, you're one of six, or in our case, seven, board members. Uh, respect the school district's chain of command. And a suc, a successful school board must function as a team with clear strategies and goals. Okay? Again, the professional development, this is often put on by MSBA. Um, the, I, I think it is important, as people run for school board, to know that many of those phase trainings, um, we do together, um, that there are phase trainings, usually, uh, the, the phase one and two are usually right before, um, the school board, um, the school board conference, which is a, a really good learning opportunity. Um, and then the finance and, and management training, um, that has been put together in consultation with the Minnesota Department of Ed and MSBA is also extremely helpful in that official. So if you're interested in running for school board, um, if people have question, you know, again, and I'm guessing most of you did this prior to running for the school board as well, um, meeting with the superintendent and school board chair to learn about the expectations of the school board members in our district. Um, start attending meetings if you haven't already done so, um, and, and know the process. So, once a school board member is elected, um, MSBA is available to you at any point in time. Um, and, and, uh, school board members do get, uh, firsthand communication from MSBA, but I think it's important just for people to know, um, I, again, my purpose here was, I've had a lot of questions, I've had people calling and asking, and I thought, um, let's just make sure that we provide information. If I have a lot of questions and, and a lot of people would like to meet with me, I can reach out and see if, um, if there's some opportunity for larger meetings, or we can just have small one-to-ones too. So that works just fine. Any questions on that? I know for most of you, this is very rudimentary review, however, um, I think it's still, it's, I, I, again, this came from MSBA, it's their, it's their primer, it's their, this is what the role of, this is, this is a school board.
Never hurts to go over this stuff.
No.
Even though we had it, it's been a while since we've been through it like that, so I think it's good.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, Thomas?
Any questions around, uh, how to register information and on table?
We have these, two things, I'm still, um, on this idea of trying to bring up the really good things happening in the school, um, like, uh, in a special, and I'd love to bring it up at every meeting, that's just personal.
Yep.
Um, the second thing is, um, are we able to talk just briefly about the budget?
We can, um, I don't.
I just got some general thoughts on the budget, and, uh, one of them is, we are scrambling. Uh, the referendum didn't pass, it's kind of combined with the referendum. The referendum did pass last time, but we are going to start to use into the reserve fund. So we're gonna have decisions of how far we go into the reserve fund. But when I look at budgeting, um, if I take, um, this, I don't know what the numbers are, but I am guessing that seventy-five percent roughly plus or minus something. Here we pay out in wages. Okay? All the rest of it is where we're gonna try and save this, this fund. So it's not like we're taking a, a ten, eleven million dollar school and trying to save a couple hundred thousand dollars. You're taking far less than that. Well, if you're, and again, I don't know what the numbers are, but if say, the areas that maybe we could find some savings are in the couple hundred thousand, or a couple million range, two hundred thousand dollars is ten percent, that's pretty sizable savings. Um, I just know that, I believe we're gonna enter a very difficult, um, decision as to where we go with the budget this year. There are areas that, um, we have a, maybe eliminated cutting. I know we came up two times, the last time we had this meeting, we talked about areas to cut, areas to bring in income, um, charging more to summer athletic events, pretty sensitive area, right? Um, we have all those, but if we don't do those things, we have to figure out how this is gonna work. Because, let's go to maintenance, we talked about maintenance again, tonight. It may not be possible to have a half-time person doing what maybe should take a full-time person. There is no maintenance that has gone down in this whole district, um, because of population of students or anything. And so we start eliminating areas, I don't know, I take my hat off to you, if you can dig this stuff out, but I just think that, as a school board, we need to be aware that, unfortunately, when I got on the school board, we didn't have a whole lot of money, we had some when we started, when I started, it disappeared almost immediately. And we were down to the point where, when faculty resigned, there was not a rehire. So let's not kid ourselves, we cut, um, offerings. It, it just happened, you, you have no choice. We don't want to get there, but we have a lot of parameters kind of, uh, against us, and we've talked about some previous, but I just thought I'd bring it up. We have, we have to present our budget in June, and decide on our budget in June, 'cause don't you have to have that to the state here pretty quick?
It has to be approved and submitted by June thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, just, just food for thought, and we all need to be thinking about it, because it's not gonna just come out of, out of the air somewhere. It's gonna have to be something if we're, or how we're gonna decide how we want, want to proceed.
And, and I'll be, I'll be really transparent and honest, the reason I don't have it on today is because I'm, I'm, I'm looking line by line at, I'm looking at, at professional development dollars, I'm looking at, um, supply budgets, I mean, I'm, I'm looking line by line to come up with money. And it's, um, I, I look at, you know, we had, we had an elementary teacher that retired last year that wasn't refilled. We had, um, a secondary teacher that retired last year and wasn't refilled. Uh, we have a choir teacher that rehired, retired, and we rehired for significant cost savings. Those were really, those are big dollars. I've not, I don't have big dollars this year to bring in. Um, I was able to do some restructuring of the food service, um, but that's the food service fund, that's not the general fund. That saved us about twenty-five thousand dollars, but that doesn't help our, that doesn't, that's not the food service fund. Or that's, that's the food service fund, that's not the general fund. Um, you know, those are, um, that's why I don't have a budget for you today, 'cause I don't have one to present to you today.
Yeah, and I wasn't asking for one, all I know is I see us, and we all have to prepare ourselves, 'cause we're gonna have lots of data to review, and it, it could become really difficult to pull this thing up.
If the referendum doesn't pass, there's, I, and, and I'll be honest, even looking, we won't be able to maintain and sustain, um, programming and impact, not impact kids by not impacting people. But it's just not, it's just, the numbers do not work. Our, our district has done a lot of work to be lean. Um, I, you know, I think back in the day when we had lots of, we had, we need a, I guess I've never been part of an organization that's had a lot of access, to be honest with you. I'm, I'm very used to working in a very frugal, um, environment. You know, I worked, when I was at, at the cooperative, I worked with the district's money. I didn't, I didn't have my own, so I was super frugal. Um, however, um, this district really has trimmed to an efficiency level. Um, and I still look at what we offer kids, and it's, it's unbelievable. I just don't know how we sustain it, to be honest.
Mr. Jefferson, that's all I have.
No, thank you.
I just wanted to be, everybody be thinking about it, because it can't be deciding this two months from now in Iraq.
No, certainly. Anything else? Here again, we'll adjourn the meeting.